I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to our Tuesday morning meeting, June 18th. My name is Andy Hunthausen. My left, Mr. Tom Rolfe.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman.
Steve Bangor, good morning. My right, Commissioner Candace Payne.
Good morning.
And we have two Geppe County attorneys, Keegan Shea and Eko Hash. Good morning, gentlemen. And Roger Baltz, our chief administrative officer. We normally start consent action items. We have none today. Mr. Baltz, you're off the hook and we'll go right to number three on our agenda, which is, well, before I do that, I'll tell you that there's sign-in sheet as well as agendas up front. Please sign in prior to leaving today. And now, either you could jump on through it. Item number three on the agenda is a bid open. Lower D2 ditch flood mitigation.
Good morning, Chairman, Commissioners. I'm Audra Zachrell, Assistant Director of Public Works. This morning, we have a bid opening for the construction of the lower D2 ditch flood mitigation project. We're looking for some precast concrete materials. We have one bid this morning. This bid has been submitted by Rinker Materials of Helena, Montana. The envelope has been well sealed. And this bid appears to be fully complete. The addendum has been acknowledged. Bid security has been included. I have a total bid price of $772,246.75. Staff would like to take this bid under advisement and return on Tuesday, July 2nd for a recommendation for award. Are there any questions?
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioners? And how about public comment on this item? Any public comment? All right. Commissioners, as requested, we would need a motion to ask staff to take the bid under advisement and return with a recommendation to us on July 2nd at our regular scheduled meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Moved to second to ask staff to take the bid under advisement, turn on July 2nd for a recommendation. All in, anything further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And just to follow up on that, for those that might be watching today, all bids are opened in a public setting. In this case, there's only one bid. It could have been five, who knows? And then we review those bids more fully and make sure that all the specs are met as well as the legalities and other things that are required in the bidding process. And then a recommendation is brought back to the commission for a final decision. So that's how it works. So just to remind people of the process. Anything further?
No, sir.
Thank you very much. Okay, we will move on. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-51, establishing the Lewis and Clark County landfill fees rate beginning July 1, 2024.
Thank you, Chairman. Commissioners, again for the record, my name is Audra Zachrell, Assistant Director of Public Works. On May 21st, Resolution 2024-33, intent to establish the Lewis and Clark County landfill fee rates beginning July 1, 2024, was passed to change and update the landfill rates. The Scratch Gravel Solid Waste Board voted to approve the rate changes on April 30th, and legal ads appeared in the Helena Independent Record on May 25th and June 8th. Written public comments were accepted until 4:00 PM yesterday, June 17th, at the Lewis and Clark County Clerk and Recorder's Office. No written comments were received. The following changes are proposed with the remaining fees staying the same. The first change proposed is adding a rate for special large bulky waste at $150 flat fee plus the tipping fee. Reducing the wastewater screenings from $50 per ton to the Class II solid waste tipping fee of $24 per ton. Increasing liquid waste from $7 per ton to the Class II solid waste tipping fee of $24 per ton. Adding the description food to be included with green waste. Adding a rate for wastewater biosolids at $10 per ton. Increasing the sale price of bentonite clay from $7 per ton to $10 per ton. Adding a sale price for chips slash mulch at $24 per ton. All other landfill fees and prices will remain the same. Today is the time scheduled for the public hearing. Staff recommends the Board of County Commissioners approve Resolution 2024-51 to change the landfill fee rates beginning July 1, 2024. Are there any questions?
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? This is our second discussion about this, but today is the public hearing as well as decision day. With no further questions, how about public comment? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay, we'll close the hearing. Commissioners, any further discussion?
No.
All right. Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2024-51?
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Second.
Moved to second to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Just in recognition of the work done behind the scenes here, this is, as you can see there, for those that might be watching, there are a lot of different fees and categories. All of this has to be tracked and designated by folks and then handled within our solid waste system. So really appreciate the work done and the recognition of those that have to deal with this waste and trying to put a, I guess, some sideboards on what does it cost to handle certain kinds of waste and what does it do to our system and recognizing that within the fee structure and trying to make that a value to the citizens, but enough to cover the costs of running our programs. So thank you very much for that. Commissioners, anything further? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Right. We'll move on to the next item, which is a bid award for magnesium chloride supply. Good morning.
Mr. Chairman Hunthausen, good morning. Commissioner Rolfe, good morning, sir. Commissioner Payne, good morning to you as well, madam. For the record, my name is Kevin Horn. Spelling on that is first name Kevin, K-E-V-I-N, last name is Horn, H-O-R-N-E. I'm the operations manager for Lewis and Clark County's Public Works Department. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I'd like to draw your attention to item number five on today's agenda. It is entitled Bid Award Magnesium Chloride Supply, and I'd like to emphasize on the word supply. This is, this is a bulk supply that we bring into our holding tanks in our facility, not to be confused with some of our prior contracts that we also asked for the supply and the application. We have a couple of those in place right now. So with that being said, on June 4, 2024, two bids were opened for the bulk magnesium chloride supply, purchase needed for the 2024 summer season dust control and road stabilization project. The road division anticipates needing up to 700 tons of the brine solution, not to exceed a total dollar amount of $110,000, as budgeted in the fiscal year 25 road infrastructure budget using rolled mill levy funds. Staff recommends awarding the supply contract to the low bidder, Dust Busters Enterprise Incorporated out of Evanston, Wyoming, for the unit price of $152.50 per delivered ton, not to exceed $110,000, and authorizes the chair to sign all applicable purchase documents. And as always, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners?
I have none.
Any questions?
No.
Okay. How about public comment on this item? Public comment on this item? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, is there a motion, please?
Commissioner Hunthausen, I move that we award the bid for magnesium chloride supply as presented by Operations Manager Kevin Horn.
Second.
Second.
Sorry about that.
I beat you. All right, it's been moved to second to approve the bid award as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Horn, and we will move on. All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is a subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Many Rivers Whole Health. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. My name is Drenda Niemann. I am the health officer for Lewis and Clark Public Health. And today I have before you a subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Many Rivers Whole Health. We have been working in partnership with Many Rivers Whole Health for several years. They are a member of our Behavioral Health Systems Improvement Leadership Team. Many Rivers has committed to reopening the crisis facility. We know this as our Journey Home and has been working toward this goal for the past year. Sustainable funding has been their biggest challenge in getting the doors back open again. Many Rivers does anticipate reopening the crisis facility this year. The funds that, that we'll use for this agreement come from our Crisis Diversion Grant, which is a grant that we receive from the Department of Public Health and Human Services. The grant is intended to support the reopening of the crisis facility. The grant funds expires June 30th of 2024. At this time, the funds intended for this subrecipient agreement are planned to assist Many Rivers Whole Health with the purchase of furniture and equipment and also reimburse travel expenses from their site visits to other crisis facilities across the state. The subrecipient agreement is in the amount of $85,000, and the term of the agreement is July 1, 2023, and expires June 30, 2024. And staff recommends approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Commissioners?
Yes, sir. Just, just a little further explanation maybe for the public. We're working towards reopening, and this would maybe fund some of the equipment and the furniture and whatnot like that.
Correct. Mr. Chair and Commissioner Rolfe, the Many Rivers has been working over the past year to get the doors reopened, and these grant funds are specifically intended to help reopen the Journey Home. At this point, with the grant expiring soon, the, the best help that we can do is to get the Journey Home prepared with the necessary furniture and equipment they'll need to open the doors and serve the public again.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. I've got an acronym question.
Yes, ma'am.
List SOW tasks. What's SOW? The bottom of the page under 2A, sub 1.
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, SOW's scope of work.
Well, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. How about public comment on this item? Public comment? Any public comment on this item? All right, Commissioners, how about a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark Public Health and Many Rivers Whole Health, as explained by Ms. Niemann.
Second.
Moved to second to approve the subrecipient agreement as presented. Further discussion?
Thank you.
Oh, yes.
I have a question. So.
Oh, a question.
What happens? I, I, I think this is an ongoing discussion we're having with the folks at Many Rivers, and it's not, we're not done with it yet. Is that true, lawyers? Or do you know?
Mr. Chair and Commissioners, yep, I think there's still some discussions going on with Many Rivers. I, Ms. Niemann wants to add anything to that as well, about how this works and to any of that, but I think there's still some discussions, but certainly the idea is to get the Journey Home back open.
So what happens if we don't reach, excuse me, what happens if we don't reach final agreement? I mean, people sometimes, and maybe this is thinking more about road contracts and mental health contracts, but if we sign this over and then don't reach an agreement, what happens?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, so this, this particular grant from the state, from the Department of Public Health and Human Services, is specifically intended to help open the Journey Home and also support other crisis services in the community. Many Rivers has committed to providing the crisis service in our community. And so, aside from other agreements that may be happening between the county and Many Rivers, the commitment to re, to open this service and provide the service in our community is solid. And so the funds then are being used to support Many Rivers as they make their steps towards reopening. We also have applied for the next round of crisis diversion grants that will start July 1. So as soon as the state awards those grants, then we'll have yet another year to continue to assist Many Rivers in, in the reopening of the Journey Home.
Follow up? So between now and the end of this fiscal year, is Many Rivers providing crisis diversion services to the people in our community that need it?
Mr. Chair and Commissioner Payne, at this point, the, the Journey Home is not yet open, so the steps that are being taken are steps to reopen. So the Journey Home has gone through with these grant funds, in addition to what we're doing to support Many Rivers through this subrecipient. And the county has used these grant funds to also make updates and renovations to the, the facility itself. And then these funds, because they're not ready to open yet, they still have to hire staff and get some other things in place. These funds will be used to help equip the building itself. So which is an appropriate use of these grant funds. It's what they're, it's what the state is hoping to see happen.
Meanwhile, that nobody is providing crisis diversion services?
Not at the Journey Home. There are crisis services being provided in the community.
Okay.
Many Rivers is working towards reopening the, the Journey Home crisis facility.
Okay.
Yeah.
And that was my concern, that we're waiting along on this real estate transaction, and meanwhile, we've got people who need these services, but you're telling me that the services continue to be provided, although not at this fiscal location. Is that correct?
And not by Many Rivers at this point. There are other crisis services in the community. Many Rivers is working towards reopening this particular service. And aside from the, the facility, the transaction of the facility, Many Rivers has committed to the services. So regardless of where the services are being provided, they, they have committed to providing those services.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks. Yes. Essentially, two different topics. So we're working on this real estate piece, but the programming and the providing of these services, that's moving forward, no matter the, the status of the building ownership.
Correct.
That, that's moving forward despite that. So, and we've been working with them for a long time to get to this opening place. This furniture and whatnot has to be purchased. It has to be, the building has to be equipped and ready to go before you can have folks staying there and providing service, giving, receiving services. Okay. Thank you. Any further questions, Commissioners? How about public comment on this item? We already have public comment. We've already have a motion and a second on the floor. Any further discussion or questions? All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is a grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation. Good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, Ann McCauley, Director of the Grants and Purchasing Department. Before you today is a two-part agenda item. The first will be a grant award, and then the second will be a subrecipient agreement. To begin, this is a grant award from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservations, American Rescue Plan Act Minimum Allocation Grant Award Program. So these are funds that are available through the state of Montana. Montana DNRC is the administering agency, and it's specific funds that were for necessary water and sewer infrastructure within the state. This is a grant application that was approved by this body in September of 2021, so it has been a while since this has become before you. And this is for La Casa Grande Estates Water and Sewer District. La Casa is directly north of East Helena, and it's a water and sewer district there. This award is for $88,500 to do water supply work for La Casa. The period of performance is March 3 of 2021, which dates back to the beginning of the American Rescue Plan Act through December 31, 2024. There is match with this, and La Casa is providing that entirety of the match commitment on this project. Staff recommendation is to approve, and we have Carrie Gardner, Great West Engineer here, to speak further on the project, as well as Ryan Williams, who's the president of the Water and Sewer District.
Great. Welcome. If you would just state your name, just for the record, that would be great, and then you have the floor. Welcome.
Yep, you bet. Thanks, Commissioners. My name's Carrie Gardner, C-A-R-R-I-E, gardener's G-A-R-D-N-E-R. I'm with Great West Engineering. I'm the engineer for La Casa Grande. Just give a brief background, and if you guys have any other questions. A little while ago, as Ann mentioned, we came before you, kind of describing the project, but La Casa has a water shortage. They were down one of their public supply wells. They had initially three wells. They took one offline back in 2010. Since then, they've seen demands grow. They are running off of two water supply wells. DEQ requires a redundant well to be able to meet peak day demand. And so currently, with just those two wells, with one of those offline, they do not meet their water system demand. So this project was to drill a new water supply well. Since we've seen you last, the district has drilled the well last October. It's provide, we tested it around 250 gallons per minute. We needed to meet 150 gallons per minute, so that was great news. We were able to do that. It's about, for anyone who cares, I guess, about 250 feet deep. This will be able to continue to serve the La Casa Water District. There's about 400 people in that district, and their demands are pretty high during the summer. As far as where we're at with construction, like I said, we've drilled the well. We're in the process of getting that finalized approval through DEQ and installing piping and electrical components this summer, hoping to have everything online mid, midsummer is what we're looking at here. That's about it. Ryan, I'll let you jump in.
My name's Ryan Williams. I'm the president of La Casa Grande Water and Sewer District. And Carrie summed it up very thoroughly and efficiently. I don't think I could add anything to what she said, but I'd be, of course, happy to answer any questions the Commissioners may have.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you both being here today. Any questions, Commissioners at this point?
I'll ask him a question. The increase in use of water, is that because the, there's been more houses built, or are people just, somebody put in a golf course? What, what's the extra use of water?
No, there, there has been, no more homes built. It is, you know, built out. The, the extra uses is, most people, they are fairly good-sized lots. They're usually a third of an acre lot, and with irrigation for, for, you know, grass and trees has, has increased, and people are starting to take care of their, their, their property as far as watering it more. So I think that that is one of the big increases is, is, is irrigation.
Are there any attempts to conserve water?
Yes, we do have several, several items in place to do that. We do have somebody monitoring. There are regulations as far as when, when somebody can water to, to, you know, it's not just a free-for-all. You do have your designated day and, and time you can water.
Okay, thank you.
I might add on to that if I will to, just from the historical use of the system. They originally had three wells, and in 2010, they had taken one offline for irrigating a park and disconnecting it from the public water supply. However, once they did that, they did notice they, they actually needed that additional supply. And so we've been working together for quite a few years here. We tried to get the existing irrigation well reconnected. However, that was a lead-lined Packer well. And so when we went to go through the process of getting that put back on through DEQ, having a lead-lined well is not ideal. So then we went back to the table to drill this new well. That completes their whole water supply. There's not, there is a little bit of an increase in historical use, but this is more for meeting redundancy purposes if any of those other two wells fail.
Thank you.
Thank you for the explanation. Appreciate it. Anything further, Commissioners? Other questions? Please.
Just a little, little thought in my thought process on this. You know, we've had a feeling of that using these ARPA funds, we were best served to do one-time projects that didn't require ongoing funding. I think this, this fits that, that mode. And even though the, the funding comes through a little different source than our regular ARPA funds by going through that minimum amplification, minimum allocation grant process through the, through the state, it, it did fit the, the goals we had. So I think that this was a, a proper way, use of the money, and, and it does not require us to do any ongoing funding for your project.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate it. Yes, and we'll hear the other half of this on the next item. So, yeah. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Anything else you want to add?
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'll move on to public comment. Any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Okay. Hearing none, Commissioners, is there a motion to approve this grant award to Lewis and Clark County from DNRC?
Chairman Hunthausen, I move that we approve the grant award to Lewis and Clark County from the Montana Department of Natural Resources and Conservation, as described by Ann McCauley, Carrie Gardner, and Ryan Williams.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the grant award as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is a subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County and La Casa Grande Estates Water and Sewer District.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, again, Ann McCauley, Director of Grants and Purchasing. So with that grant award approved, I'd like to bring forward a subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County and La Casa Grande Estates Water and Sewer District. Per our usual arrangement with these kind of grants, where the county is the required applicant, but we're passing through the funds to an organization that's eligible. That's what this subrecipient agreement will do. It's for the full amount of $88,500, has the same match commitment and the same period of performance as the grant award that we just did, March 3 of 21 through December 31 of 2024. Staff recommendation is to approve.
Thank you very much. Questions, Commissioners? All right. How about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? All right, hearing none. Is there a motion, please, Commissioners?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve the subrecipient agreement between Lewis and Clark County and La Casa Grande Estates Water Sewer District, as explained by Ms. McCauley.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the subrecipient agreement as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
No.
Best of luck. Thank you. All right. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024- All right, next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-52, Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on U.S. Bank Helena with a date of issuance between June 1, 2022, and June 30, 2023 in the county clerk's office. Good morning.
Good morning, Chairman Hunt, and Commissioners. For the record, my name is Laramie Rata, Accounting Clerk II with the Treasurer's Accounting Department. Before you today are seven resolutions canceling uncalled warrants. Montana Code 7-6-2607 states the Board of County Commissioners must cancel all county warrants that have remained uncalled for one or more years. This process is part of our fiscal year and cleanup adjustments. Please know when canceling these uncashed warrants, the money will be deposited into the county's general fund. Although the warrants will be canceled, the county will continue to be liable for payment on these checks. This means if three or even 20 years from now, if someone comes in with one of these checks, staff will research it to ensure that we make good on the payment. The first resolution before you canceling uncashed warrants is 2024-52, Canceling Uncalled Warrants on the County Clerk's Office for $5,730.87. The second resolution before you canceling uncashed warrants is 2024-53, Canceling Uncalled
I'm sorry, interrupter, we're going to do one at a
Oh, sorry, okay.
All right, you did great.
Okay.
And we're going to take them one at a time as they are individual items on our agenda. So we'll take 52 first. So thank you for the presentation. Questions, Commissioners, on 2024-52?
Can I comment?
You may, absolutely.
I had the opportunity to meet with our presenter. And Laramie explained how, I had no idea how this worked. It's, so they're basically, the county owes money to various people out there, individual, our constituents. And if somebody doesn't come in and collect, or if they don't cash that check, it's just sitting there. State law requires we have to do something. You can't just get it, get rid of it, or use it to, you know, buy Chairman Hunt, a new car, or something like that. And so they have this method where they take it out of the control of the entity that issued the check. And through the method that she is currently doing, they then give it back to the general fund. But if somebody comes in and wants to check, cash that check, and I, did you say it was 10 years?
There is no limit.
Okay, so 50 years from now, I come in and I want to cash this check from the county. It is still my money, and I still get, so it was really helpful to have that explanation. So thank you for doing that, and
Thanks, Commissioner. Yeah, we learn something every day.
It's clarification in government.
Thank you. Anything further?
No.
How about public comment on this item? Public comment? All right, hearing none. Commissioners, a motion on 52, did we already do a, we didn't do a
Nope.
So a motion for Resolution 2024-52?
Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2024-52, Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on U.S. Bank Helena with a date of issuance between June 1, 2022, and June 30, 2023 from the county clerk's office as presented by Ms. Rata.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you. Okay, now on to Resolution 2024-53, which is Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on U.S. Bank Helena with a date of issuance between July 1, 2022, and June 30, 2023 from the Fairgrounds Fund Number 602, please.
The second resolution before you canceling uncashed warrants is 2024-53, Canceling Uncalled Warrants on the Fairgrounds Fund 602 for $300.
All right, Commissioners, any questions?
None.
Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve Resolution 2024-53, Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on U.S. Bank of Helena with a date of issuance between July 1 of '22 and July, or the June 30 of '23 from the Fairgrounds Fund Number 602 as explained by Ms. Rata.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you. On to number 11 on the agenda, which is Resolution 2024-54. I'll let you explain it.
The third resolution before you canceling uncashed warrants is 2024-54, Canceling Uncalled Warrants on the Sheriff's Commissary Fund 703 for $1,621.05.
Any questions, Commissioners? Any questions about this? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2054, pardon me, Resolution 2024-54, Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on the U.S. Bank of Helena with a date of issuance between July 1, 2022, and June 30, 2023 from the Sheriff's Commissary Fund Number 703 as presented by Ms. Rata.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you. All right, we're on to Resolution 2024-55, Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on U.S. Bank of Helena with a date of issuance between July 1, 2022, and June 30, 2023 from the Justice Court.
The fourth resolution before you canceling uncashed warrants is 2024-55, Canceling Uncalled Warrants on the Justice Court for $7,273.70.
Any questions, Commissioners?
None.
Any public comment on this item? Any public comment on this item? All right, hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-55, Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on U.S. Bank of Helena with a date of issuance between July 1 of '22, July and June 30 of '23 from the Justice Court as explained by Ms. Rata.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion?
I just have one comment. On each one of the resolutions that we are discussing here today, there is attached a list. It's Exhibit A, and on it is a list of all these outstanding checks with the check number, the date, the recipient's name, and the amount of the check. So if someone is interested, or if they want to know, if they were talking about a check that they have, it is available in this record.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anything further? All right, how about we take public comment on this? Lose where we are. We're on 55, correct?
Yes.
And any public comment? Hearing none, we have a motion and a second already? Okay, we have a motion and a second. Great. Just repeating myself. All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you. I lost track for a second there. All right, I'm back on. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-56.
The fifth resolution before you canceling uncashed warrants is 2024-56, Canceling Uncalled Warrants on the Sheriff's Civil Trust Fund 706 for $1.44.
Thank you very much. Any questions, Commissioners?
No.
Any public comment on this item? Public comment on this item? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 2024-56, Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on U.S. Bank of Helena with a date of issuance between July 1, 2022, and June 30, 2023 from the Civil Trust Fund Number 706 as presented by Ms. Rata.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Aye, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is Item Resolution 2024-57.
The sixth resolution before you canceling uncashed warrants is 2024-57, Canceling Uncalled Warrants on the Treasurer's Office Accounting Department for $622.17.
Any questions, Commissioners? How about public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve Resolution 2024-57, Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on U.S. Bank of Helena with a date of issuance between July 1 of '22 and June 30 of '23 from the Treasurer's Office Accounting Department as explained by Ms. Rata.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners? All in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Resolution 2024-58.
The seventh resolution before you canceling uncashed warrants is 2024-58, Canceling Uncalled Warrants on the County Payroll Fund 700 for $217.84.
Thank you. Any questions, Commissioners? Any public comment on this item? Any public comment? Any public comment? Hearing none, is there a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I would move to approve Resolution 2024-58, Canceling Uncalled Warrants Drawn on U.S. Bank of Helena with a date of issuance between July 1 of 2022 and June 30 of 2023 from the County Payroll Fund Number 700 as explained by Ms. Rata.
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve the resolution as presented. Further discussion, Commissioners?
Just one, just one item of information. If someone were to come in, want to look at this and see if they're, see that their name was on there, should they, would there be any particular way that they should go about getting refunded, getting those warrants refunded?
I think if they just get in contact with us and give us the check number and the name, we can do all the research on it.
Okay, thank you.
Great, anything else? Like to just say, nice job?
Thank you.
As far as I know, first time you've been before us, you did a great job.
Thank you.
And the way it works, we have to go through every, every one of them. So it takes a little time, but it is the way we have to do it. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. All right, with that, Commissioners, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Okay, we have come to that time in our meeting where we will take public comment on any item that is under the jurisdiction of the Commission, but not on today's agenda. Welcome, if you give us, give us your name, information for the record, that would be grand, and you have the floor. Thank you.
Morning, Commissioners. My name is John Andrew. I'm a resident here in Helena, Lewis and Clark County. I'm here about my property taxes. But don't worry, I'm not complaining. I've got an observation and a suggestion. Back in the previous century, a good friend of mine was elected to the Yellowstone County Commission. And in about his first week in office, he was wandering through the Treasurer's Office, and he noticed an abundance of checks made out to Yellowstone County that were sitting on desks and were in desk drawers, et cetera, et cetera. And he did something about it. So six months ago, when I paid my first half property taxes, I came up to the courthouse because it was about the 20th of the month by then, and my check hadn't been cashed. I don't ask for, I paid directly to the county. Ran into Commissioner Hunt, and he explained that apparently staff shortages, whatever it was, the check hadn't been cashed yet. So I'm here six months later. The second half of my property taxes is around $3,000. It's the 18th of the month, and my check has not been cashed. And as was discovered in Yellowstone County, an abundance of money like that, sitting around, not being deposited, doesn't draw interest. And on top of that, taxpayers like me kind of go, gee, did they get my check? And am I going to get a bill for not paying taxes on time? So those are my observations. It's almost 20 days into the month, and there's $3,000 that the county's not getting the use of, nor am I getting the use of it. It's just in limbo. And if I'm but one taxpayer, I have to wonder how many other taxpayers are having their checks sitting in the same status? How long do they go on cash? And how much revenue is being lost by Lewis and Clark County in the course of all of this? And I have a hunch it's pretty substantial. It was in Yellowstone County, I know that. And I realize staffing problems and things like this. But my suggestion is, and I'm surprised an auditor hasn't caught up on this. I worked for state government for a long time, and auditors don't like cash just sitting around, or checks sitting around. They get lost, they get misplaced, and revenue's being lost on it. I think somebody, the commissioner, somebody in the Treasurer's Office ought to give this some attention and find a way to deposit these funds in a timely manner. That's, that's my observations.
Thank you very much, Mr. Andrews. Really appreciate your public comment today. Thank you very much for being here. Any other public comment? Any other public comment today? All right. Hearing no further public comment, we will stand adjourned, Commissioners. Thank you.